Five thirty on Monday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I'd like to call this work session to order. The first on the agenda is a presentation from Mothers Out Front. So do we have Mr. Valdez? Mr. Martinez? To the podium, please. Okay.
Oh, my own? Okay. Hello, my name's Aaron Martinez. I'm with Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment, and I work in the air quality program. I'm a program manager. And what we are doing right now is, I kind of want to give you just an update on air quality in Pueblo. We've, we have a, an air monitor system that's up on Fountain Elementary School, and that is, it measures particulate matter. So we have some, if you see like the fine dust that's in the air, you know, it kind of measures that is what we're doing. So we have to go up to the, the filters, and we have to change them, and we send them up to the state. We get that data once a year. You know, it's not a live monitor. We do have one real-time live monitor right now. I was able to get that from the State Health Department about a year ago, and so that's part of Purple Air. I'm sorry, I'm just still looking to see if Mothers Out Front's gonna come. Basically, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna team up with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Mothers Out Front, and the local health department. So what we can do is apply for a grant to expand more air monitoring in Pueblo County. And with that, we're looking at six to eight monitors to put around town. It's a live monitor, so you can, we want to put it on a network, and then you can see what's happening in that area. So as of right now, we're doing particulate matter. That's all you can see on the Purple Air monitor. That's all, only in one location. With this, you know, we're hoping to get a baseline data. I don't know if you've noticed, but when you're coming into Pueblo from out of town, some days there's the black brown cloud now. You know, growing up, we didn't have, I mean, I would, I would see that back in the seventies. We cleaned up a little bit in, you know, late eighties, nineties, but now we're starting to see it a little bit more. So we are working on this grant. We want to work with Mothers Out Front where they do education. So they'll set up the meetings. The health department will go in and we'll talk about air quality and just kind of give updates on what's going on, how to use that, the computer interface, and something like that. So they were gonna, you know, give their talk on kind of what their plan is for Mothers Out Front to set up these, these meetings for us and to do education and outreach to the community. So that's basically is just kind of a update to let you know what we're doing and what we're looking at doing in air monitoring in Pueblo.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you. Can we, can you explain what the, what the grant that you're applying for is for, for the, from the, from the EPA?
Yeah, it's a, it's a grant that was just recently this year. It's ARPA funding to expand actual enhanced air monitoring for communities. That's exactly what it's for. And since we only have one location that does air monitoring, I think that would be good for us to expand a little bit.
And so where would these six to eight be located? Like, would they be in neighborhoods? Would they be out in the county or?
Yeah, I think that's what we want to work with. Mothers Out Front, they can do some of the outreach to see where we want to put these locations on schools. So I think would be a good idea. We could do elementary schools in certain locations, or if there are, you know, certain, you know, just, I, I think we need to just kind of do Pueblo in general. I mean, since we only have one location, so it's something that we can work on with the community on where we want these, these monitors at.
Great. I just have one last question. Why is it important to get a baseline of metrics?
I think for us, you know, we've, you know, we're a clean, I mean, well, we have a relatively clean community in terms of our water and our air. We're gonna have, we're having growth. You know, we have a lot of people coming in. We need to get a good baseline of, of the monitoring that we have right now or of what's happening right now, because right now it's just, you know, one monitor. As we grow, we want to see where, what's going on with that, that air quality and what we need to do with it.
Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this happen. I worked for the health department in the air pollution control section.
Yeah, I think I've seen a picture of you.
Yeah.
Changing filters.
Changing filters, yeah. And we had a, a, air pollution control samplers all over the city. But that was back when CF and I was going gangbusters in eighty-four when they shut down. Prior to that, we violated the clean air standards about three or four times a year. And it was for particulates, not for, not for any other pollutant, because they did test for the others in those samples. But I think it's a good idea now, because it's been a long time since they, they had, they did have a baseline back then. But yeah, I think it's a good idea to, to do that, you know. I was, of course, I had your job at the time, but no, I really think it's a good idea, because since then, a lot has changed. And, and we'll find out again what the baseline is. And I ventured a guess that, as a matter of fact, I don't know that we violated the clean air standard since then. Because the State Health Department came down in late seventies, I believe, maybe early eighties, and said, "We no longer have to test, because we're not violating that standard any longer." And unlike our sister city in Denver, we don't violate those, those standards any longer, even for, even for particulates. And that was because CF and I shut down, basically. You know, we'll get a, I, I ventured a guess that we'll get a really big dust storm that comes through, and it might perk the, the results up a lot, but I don't know. Have you viol, have we violated this, this standard since the eighties, basically? I don't know.
That's the thing. We only have one set of monitors on Fountain Elementary. We only get that data once a year that's published in a book. So when you look at it, it's, you gotta wait a year to figure out what that year looked like and what, what had happened. Relatively, we have decent air here in town. Last year, though, it changed with the wildfire smoke. And so it was one of the worst years that I've seen, that we had multiple days that we had just terrible air quality.
I can see, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not sure how much this kind of air monitoring, that will help, but when it's that widespread, it's, you know, it covers the whole community. But this, with this kind of monitoring, we have options to do little more technical gathering of data. I mean, we can get down to ground level ozone with this, depending on what we want to do. Right now, we don't have any ground level ozone monitoring in Pueblo at all. So we don't even know what that looks like, and that's what that brown cloud is when we're, when you look at it. You know, we're very, we get a lot of sunlight in Pueblo, and with any of those combustible chemicals coming from cars or manufacturing, that sunlight hits it, creates the ozone. If we get weather pattern that suppresses that down, it stays. And then, you know, getting exposed to that over and over, it'll cause damage over time. And so this is something that we just need a baseline on. We don't have this information yet. And that's what we were looking to do with this monitor.
Good idea.
Other questions or comments from council? I think that the reason why this presentation was requested is because letter, a letter of support from the city was.
That is, my ask is that we would get a letter of support from the city to Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for this grant.
Okay.
Yeah, and the grant is actually due March twenty-fifth, so I don't know how that works for council.
So I need a motion then? No? Counselor Winner? Councilman Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Maishri? Counselor Tencio? Counselor Graham? Counselor Mr. K, okay. And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Have a great day.
You as well. The next presentation that we have is an NAACP update. Do we have Ms. Mack? Ms. Mack, whenever you're ready. Okay.
Ron? No.
This is on? Okay. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Roxenna Mack, and I'm the president of the local NAACP Pueblo branch. I was invited here this evening just to give you an update on what we are doing in the community and what our plans are and our goals are for this year. I do want to thank Councilman, Councilwoman Martinez for inviting me, and I look forward to working with each of you in our endeavors. Let me put my glasses on, my readers on. I do want to just give you a little background on what the NAACP stands for. It is the oldest, most recognizable civil rights organization in the United States and abroad. We have over twenty-two hundred branches throughout the United States, which we are, are one. We fall under the Colorado, Montana, Wyoming State Conference. Everything that we do is dictated by our national office in Washington, DC. As many of you may know, the NAACP was established over a hundred years ago in nineteen oh nine by a diverse group of individuals. So some people have the perception that the NAACP is just for black people, but it's, it's for all people. It encompasses the marginalized people of every sector. The NAACP Pueblo branch was established nine years after the, the national organization in nineteen nineteen. And both entities were established because of the things that were going on in the United States that affected African-American people and the marginalized people of color. Again, I'm Roxenna Mack, and I have my first vice president in the audience, Ms. Helen Wiley. I just want to acknowledge those folks that came down to support me. So I have my criminal justice chair, Mr. Ron Wiley. I have my secretary, Bianca Hicks. My political action chair, Ms. Marty Poole. My economic chair, Eric Javanagh, who is also our treasurer. And I have Mr. Mark Holmes, who is my climate environmental chair. And I just want to tell you some of the things that we have been doing in the community since my presidency. I have emphasized unity and communication. We know we can't do this work by ourselves, and we are open to dialogue, even with those that may not have the same ideologies as we do. But we understand that in order to close the gap, we have to be able to discuss issues and concerns. So last year, well, pretty much almost two years with the COVID, we have been, we've had some challenges. We've lost members from the COVID. But we have also made strides during the COVID. We took to Zoom video virtual meetings and virtual fo, forums and activities. Some of the things that we have been doing, or that we did last year, was that we established a, well, not established, but we hosted an economic justice forum. We hosted a COVID educational forum. We hosted two redistricting forums in Pueblo, in partnership with the League of Women Voters, just to give the community a vibe of what redistricting meant. And the second one was what it, what effects it had on Pueblo. We also did a health fair. We also worked with the Census Bureau, with Ms. Martinez, in reference to making sure all of our, our folks were counted and the importance of that. A lot of our, our, the things that we do are advocacy work, getting, getting it out to the, our constituents, what's important, and giving them true facts on voting rights is one of the big things that we're, we're working on right now, is voting rights and the voting suppression. We want to get out the, the true, and true facts on what's going on and make sure everyone understands that, that they count and that they're important. During this COVID, we also recognized that there's a lot of disparities in healthcare education. So we have reached out to our District Sixty, where we have formed partnerships. We have formed partnerships with Parkview and the foundation to get the information out to our constituents on, on good health and what, and what they need and, and what they're offering. We're also working with expanding youth and young adult engagements. We're working with CSUP in, in doing this, trying to get, reactivate our chapter on CSUP's campus. We're also, as I mentioned before, with all, all my chairs, we, we're working with the climate. We know that climate change is, is real, and we're trying to stay up on that, especially with where Pueblo is with closing up the Comanche Center and, and even with the, the, the solar entities that they, they were trying to bring, the nuclear components that they were trying to bring here. So and as I said, we're, we're just continuing to try to build alliances within the community. We have over, well, approximately a hundred members in our organization at this time. And we're, we're gonna be launching a, a membership drive trying to incorporate corporations and government officials and government agencies to join in with the fight of civil rights for everyone. As I said before, we, we feel like unity and respect and inclusivity is very important in, in our organization. So we're, we're open to everyone and everyone's opinions. Our theme for this year was start, "Change starts with me." And this reflects, in my opinion, it reflects the, the commitment that oneself has to better the whole or the community. And that's where we have been working to come together. We just recent, well, we just completed our Black History Month activities, which included bringing the play "The Black, Black" down from Denver. It was a conversation, a play or two, a conversation about race and just the different perspectives of two different people with the same issue. But they had two different ideologies of, of what they thought it was. Not saying that either one were right or wrong, but just to get the discussion so that they could come together and, and see and, and hear what each was thinking and what each felt about the situation. We also had Congressman, the US Congressman Joe Nagus Down, who presented to, at CSUP on Friday. He was able to discuss, have a conversation with the students at CSU and also with community leaders. And then he was able to speak to the community as a whole, just the ideas of what's going on today and, and just the importance of everyone having a voice. Also, at the height of, when, with George Floyd incident happened, we were able to organize a justice rally that brought the community together to just to talk and discuss and, and to learn from one another. We also had a conversation with law enforcement, with the community. We brought all the law enforcement leaders, the sheriff, the police chief, and the DA together to talk to the community members and to hear what they had to say and to get feedback. Currently, we're working with the, the Law Enforcement Academy Steering Committee that is, of, us, over the community, community colleges. And they're reexamining the way they teach prospective law enforcement officers, and I'm a part of that committee. I'm also part of the COVID Task Force Committee with the, the Pueblo depart, the Pueblo Health Department. We're also working with the Pueblo County City Library District to bring a section of the new library, the Rollins Library, to bring a, a section to emphasize African-American authors, characters, so that the young people can see themselves and, and be able to dream. So that's a big project that we're looking forward to, and hopefully that will take place by the time they reopen the Rollins Library. Just going down my little list. And when, if I go over my time, please let me know.
Yeah, Ms. Mack.
Have I already gone over?
It's okay. Can we do, can we have some time for questions? Would that be okay? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Mack. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Ms. Mack, I don't think that's a little list. You all have so much going on. I really appreciate everything that you're, that you're, that the NAACP brings to light in our community, the different cultural aspects and events that, that you all help shepherd and just help enlighten our community on different issues for the black community, which similarly is also for the brown community, but also for the public community as a whole, as we are half minority. And so, back to your little list. I've been to a number of the events this month and this year and last year as well. But how can we be more up to date on some of the activities that you all have going on?
We do have a Facebook page as well as our website. And to be more active within our organization, I, I did bring some membership forms for each of you. I would really like for each of you to be a member of the NAACP and be a part of what we're doing. As I said, it is for the, the betterment of the community and not just one sector of the community.
Great. I need to renew my membership, so I'm gonna grab one of those.
Okay.
Thank you.
What other questions are there? Oh, can Chief Knoller, can you please open the door in the back? I think it's locked. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, we do. Are there any? I do want to just mention two activities that we have annually, and that is our Mary Jane Neal Cookout, which is a cookout every July. Last year, we were able to bring in the Pueblo Food Project as well as the, the mobile vaccine bus. And we also bring in the, the Fire Department as well as the Police Department just to interact with the young people that come and, and, and the community leaders, not community as a whole, just to get them to know that we are together, we're working together. You don't have to be afraid of the police, nor do you have to be, you know, afraid to, you know, just interact with them and call upon them. We, we have forged a, I believe, a really good relationship with both the Police Department and the Fire Department. And we just recently joined the Chambers of Commerce. So I think we're a worthwhile organization, and we're doing, we're trying to do what we can to impact Pueblo in a positive way.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Other questions or comments from council? Let's just say that someone in here that doesn't maybe have access to the form or who's watching online wants to join the NAACP, how would they do that?
You can go to our website, which is NAACPPueblo.net. Or you can call me. Just call me. I can give you my phone number, my email, and, and they can get us, get ahold of us that way.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mack, and thank you for the NAACP members that are here as well. Thank you for your time. We are going to transition into our next agenda topic, which is around the civil service update. So do I have Mr. Akala to the podium?
Good evening. And this, this evening, I'm going to present on behalf of the Civil Service Commission. The commissioners are here in case you guys have questions at the end of my presentation that are specific to them. So Title VI of Pueblo Municipal Code begins with a solitary statement that reads, "Pursuant to Section eight dash three of the Charter, there is hereby established a civil service system for the employees of the city." So tonight, I want to give you a brief summary, because our time is limited. Give you a brief summary, summary as to what this system is. Tell you a little bit about the jurisdiction and duties of the Civil Service Commission and the staff. And since there was an interest in hearing about our selection and hiring process, I will focus my attention on that and also tell you a little bit about our time to hire city employees. So the civil service system is basically a collection of rules and regulations within Charter, within Pueblo Municipal Code, including civil service rules and contracts for general service, police, and fire unions with two main purposes. The main one is that all appointments are The main one is that all appointments and promotions are made in accordance with merit and fitness. Secondly, it offers very vital protections to everybody involved. It ensures that job applicants, candidates, and employees are shielded from unfair treatment or discrimination. By the virtue of the checks and balances and the different processes that are involved, it also shields the city from potential liability and litigation. The Civil Service Commission is an elected board with limited jurisdiction. Their powers and duties are limited to classified service employees and only for what is afforded through or authorized through the Charter and the ordinances. Their main duties include holding public hearings related to the classification, reclassification, and allocation of positions, hearings related to disciplinary action, including suspension of over two days, demotions, and terminations, as well as hearing any proposals for changes to the civil service rules. They may also have certain discretion on holding other hearings related to individuals who get rejected for, from the application process or who get removed from eligible lists. They can hear that on their discretion. They are also tasked with investigating any or all matters relating to the conditions of employment, holding periodic competitive examinations, and performing other lawful acts and functions as may be set forth by you guys, the city council. The commission staff assist the commission in fulfilling its obligations under the rules. Our main duties include serving as secretary and clerk to the commission, maintaining commission records, and aside from performing all other duties that may be assigned by the commission, most of our day is spent managing the competitive examination process. This includes advertising positions throughout the public, processing applications, and developing, conducting, and administering grading examinations as well as maintaining the eligible lists that result from those examinations. Selection and hiring is a comprehensive process. To ensure that this is a fair and impartial process, it is a team effort. It is not purely a civil service office function. It involves the mayor, the different hiring managers from the departments, the HR department, and obviously, civil service. The entire process is guided by Pueblo Municipal Code and the contracts provisions under the contracts. And it, those rules basically dictate the different responsibilities that the different entities have and the players that perform those functions. It talks about the timeframes and deadlines that we must follow as well as the recourse that is available to the participants who feel that they've been wronged in the process. So when we fill a vacancy, the process begins with the department head. The department manager identifies that there is a vacancy and immediately they contact HR and they contact the city mayor. As soon as the mayor approves the filling of the vacancy, then HR contacts civil service and they request that an eligible list be provided to them. And we do that unless there is no list to provide to them or if the mayor decides that there are insufficient names on the list to be, to fill a vacancy. In that case, they also request that a new list be established. And that's when our process begins of taking applications and testing. Then Human Resources takes over. They are, they are the main characters in the hiring and selection process. They coordinate and manage the entire process. They are the primary contact for candidates, the hiring department, civil service, and the mayor. Time to hire is a measure of how long it takes to hire or promote employees in the classified service. So when we report this, there are two distinct concepts that I want to bring in front of you tonight, tonight. And I call them time to fill and the candidate experience. The time to fill is based on our staff performance, all the different players in the selection and hiring process. The process begins when the mayor approves the vacancy and we begin taking applications and it ends when the vacancy is filled. This again speaks to the staff efficiency within the confines of the rules, the timelines that we're given. The candidate experience is something completely different. Not less important, simply different. The candidate experience speaks to how long the candidate feels the process took. The clock begins when the applicant submits an application and ends when that individual gets hired on. The, it's conceivable that that timeframe, the candidate experience, could be shorter than the time it takes us to fill vacancy based on when the applicant submitted an application within the application window. It could be shorter, but in a lot of times, it could be a lot longer. And that length could be related to the unfunding of vacancies, which have occurred since the recession of 2008, 2009. It could also be based on the performance on the exam for that candidate. It's different if they scored really well and were immediately sent to the interview versus somebody who barely passed the test and is there for the duration of the list. And finally, another factor that affects how long a person stays on the list is the life of the list itself. We have several lists that are one-year lists. However, the other ones are two years. So conceivably, somebody could be on the list for two or more years. So when we have a vacant, when we have a list available, the hiring process is relatively fast. After the mayor approves the vacancy, the hiring manager gets together with HR to update the job description. The main purpose is to make sure that the position duties, responsibilities, and qualifications are correctly reflected on the job description before we engage in the hiring process. Then the general service union requires that we post all vacancies for that union for 10 days for transfer and demotion. So we have to meet that requirement. Once that happens, the Civil Service Commission, if they have a list, certifies that list and HR can go about doing interviews and any post, post offer activities such as background investigations, drug screens, and all of that stuff that happens after they do their interviews and make an offer. The time is expanded a little bit when there is no list or the mayor requests that we establish a new one. In that case, the process begins when we, when we start taking applications. We post it either for promotion or open to the public. And we do this concurrently with the transfer that's required according to the paid shooting and contract, just to save time. For all of these promotionals and external positions, the candidates have appeal rights if their application was rejected. So what we do when we schedule the exam, we make it so that we clear that appeal period plus a day or so for any appeals that are submitted for the, to allow the commission to actually process those appeals and make a decision on them. And then, once we administer the exam, our process is so good. I think we have a system that is shared by both HR and civil service. And this system allows us to score and rank applications right away. So almost immediately after we take the exam, the lists are available to HR from which they can draw and start their interview process. This length of process is a little different for promotionals though because our employees have an additional appeal period. They are allowed to appeal the conduct, the content, the scoring, and the ranking of their exams. And they're allowed 10 business days to do that. So we allow for that before we process the applications over to HR. So at this point, they can do interviews, they can do background checks. They can just, the only thing they cannot do is take formal action because there is no list. The list gets established when the commission meets the following month and establish the list they sign off on it. That's when it becomes effective. That's when they can do promotional offers and things like that. And so the next slide, hopefully you have a copy in front of you, gives you our time to hire, our average. As you can see, it takes the five-year average for the Civil Service Commission from the time we start taking up applications to the time that names are available to HR is about 40 days. Then the, what we call post-certification process involves the interview, involves background investigations. In the case of police officers and police department employees, there's also psychological, there's a polygraph. There is always drug screens, medicals that need to happen, and possibly a two-week period for the potential employees to let their former employers know that they're moving and getting hired on with us. So that process, the post-certification process is about 68 days for an average of 108 days for the time to fill. The candidate experience is quite a different story. If you, as you can tell, the five-year average is about 217 days. This equals a little bit over seven months for filling these vacancies. So the candidate feels that, yeah, it's taking quite a bit to get hired on. And again, this is out of our control and a lot of times based on the rules, based on the policies that we have to work under. To give you a, an example of how this works, of the difference between time to fill and the candidate experience, I'd like to bring a, an example for you. We had a code enforcement officer recruitment recently. Well, if we look at the time to fill, we started as soon as the mayor approved the vacancy. And if we assume that the candidate is to be hired starting tomorrow, it would have taken us about a month and a half to fill the vacancy. However, this particular opening was previously unfunded. So we had to go back, according to the rules, we have to use the list that was active when the vacancy occurred. Well, it turns out that this particular individual, who hopefully will get hired on, applied back in November of 2019. So if you do the math, this individual's experience, it has taken over two years to get hired on. Quite a big difference from our process versus what the candidates feel the process is taking. They're both important, but they're different aspects of the same equation. That concludes my presentation. I would appreciate any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. What questions are there from Council? Council Flores?
Thank you for the presentation. I've learned a lot of new stuff as to what you guys do. You're pretty thorough and that's, that's a good thing. When you look at the environment today and you see the demand for employees and you see help wanted signs everywhere. I do know, in fact, today's paper, you have a position open at the city. So you do advertise for job openings. And is there, is there any, anything that we could be doing differently in being more proactive about? You always hear the expression that we train police officers and then other cities steal them from us. And, and the question is, you know, why aren't we stealing, I guess, other police officers from other communities and doing the same thing? So is there much proactive searching by your department for people that are already experienced? And, you know, you, you could potentially put them in the queue to apply in the city of Pueblo. We have over, as I understand, we have over 60, 60 positions open right now in the city and we can't fill them. And we recently are in the process of hiring a statistician that's going to be doing a lot more in-depth look at employment throughout the whole city, not just the city of Pueblo. And she's discovered that there's over 5,000 openings right now in Pueblo. It is because we are not connecting their education with the positions and it's not a kilter. So the workforce development piece really has to be worked at. So my question really had to do with whether or not there's other proactive things that you can do to have people apply through the Civil Service Commission.
Sure. So, Mr. Flores, we are doing quite a bit. You know, maybe this is not the forum to toot our horn. However, our office is managing all of the processes that we have to process with only two full-time employees. Obviously, we have two part-timers as well that are helping us out with the process. But I think we've managed quite a bit with this. There's certainly there are mechanisms within our applicant tracking system that allow individuals to submit an interest when they're interested in applying for the city. We are trying to track where we are having success, where we're not having success in our recruitment efforts. We did a research about a year ago using an intern where that intern identified what it is that we have to do in order to attract people to apply. And where do we look? So I'm happy to say that as of today, we have over 140 contacts, various community colleges, universities. We advertise through various workforce centers, even around the, outside of state of Colorado. I think we have five or six workforce centers that we advertise through and we're trying to expand that network. We found that a lot of things don't work anymore. Things that used to work back in the early 2000s, like going out to career fairs, that kind of thing. And we're trying to make our efforts match what the current research is saying. So as far as being proactive, every single app, the application that we post to the public gets attention and we try to post it in as many places as we can. Again, because of our staffing situation, there's only so much we can do. Hopefully in the future, I will be, I will continue to put in for a marketing coordinator, a marketing specialist. I think that's what we need as a city. Somebody who can citywide market city jobs. I truly think that that's the way to go. Somebody who is just dedicated to that is what we need. Thank you.
Council Winner. Thank you, Manuel, for that presentation. The problem I see is, is again, the time. People that are looking for a job need a job. So even with your average amount of time, that's four to six and a half months before anybody can get hired. So a good example is, the chief was telling me about having 102 people apply for a police officer. And by the time it got down to that 102, I think he had maybe six to nine people. So a lot of those police officers are applying all over the place because they have families and they need jobs. So I just think it's, it's too long. You know, when, when you, when you run an ad in the paper, or not in the paper, just on the, anywhere, and on the website or whatever, isn't there a minimum qualification with all of your positions that you're advertising? And if so, why the test?
Sure. So again, all of the selection need to be done based on merit and fitness. And the rules call for that to be ascertained through an examination process to make sure that not only the minimum qualifications are taken into account, but also their skill, their knowledge is taken into account. And that's what we, that's what we try to do with the examination process. Now, to answer your question as far as, as to why it takes so long, you know, Councilor Winner, I have been with the city for 18 and a half, over 18 years. I spent 12 years in HR as a recruitment outreach coordinator, followed by an HR analyst doing the hiring and selection for the city. Then about six years ago, I moved over to civil service and we have been working very closely with department directors, with HR. And I can confidently tell you that what we are doing to fill vacancies, the time to fill part of it is the, probably the best that we have ever done. And shortening the process, I think, is a danger for us because then we are cutting into some of the protections that are afforded to the different players, including the city. I think we're opening ourselves up for liability and possible litigation if we take shortcuts in filling those vacancies. A lot of that time to fill that A lot of that, uh, time to fill that is, is, that seems a little high. Well, there have to be background checks that need to be done on every employee. And if we take shortcuts on that, we may be hiring a liability and somebody who may end up having issues.
So how long does it take to do a background check? It doesn't take six months, does it?
Chief, can you help with that? My understanding is that, uh, it could be several weeks.
Okay. So that's not, again, that's not six months. Uh, you know, back in 2018, uh, I was just in front of the whole, um, ballot initiative for, for more police officers. And I think the firemen were actually kind of angry with me because I insisted that it, that it was police only, because we really needed police. Um, that was for an additional 24 more police officers above and beyond what we already had. That's never, ever been filled, ever. And crime rate is up. So citizens are pretty upset about the crime rate. And also paying for these extra police officers that never happened. 24 new police officers should have been a whole nu, whole other shift. And it's never happened in four years. And, um, I, I think it's probably because of the time that it takes to hire someone. Also, it just seems like a lot of departments are kind of chasing their tails all the time because of the length, the time it takes to hire someone. You know, anybody that's motivated to get a job gets out there and gets it. So they're already into a job, seven months, a new job before they even get a call from you. Already accumulating vacation time and benefits.
May I respond to that? So I, I think you are right, time plays a factor in it. I think a bigger factor i- is what's happening nationwide with law enforcement. There's also the factor that, uh, salaries. Um, I don't know if, uh, we have done salary surveys on, uh, the average pay for officers. And what would it take to attract those officers to come to the city of Pueblo?
I think the chief has done, uh, knows all about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's other factors other than time that need to be considered.
Uh, Ms. Solano?
Um, thank you. I'd like to refer back to the time to feel chart, um, that Manuel, Mr. Alcala had presented. Civil service duties and responsibility end up only in civil service, which is one half of the time. Post-certification activity, all of the background checks, all of the other, um, psychological exams for citizens. Past, past exam are all an HR function. So although they go together, the civil service in the last one, you could see a 34.8 days in civil service. Versus 66.1 in post-certification of that.
Right. It doesn't matter though, the total time is the issue. It's just, it's just, it's just too much, it's too long.
It is long and it is a separation of, of the duties of one versus the other. And is also, um, part of, uh, what we'll see here on Thursday, a request for a full comprehensive compensation study. So we can look at the salaries across the board.
Okay, I'm ju, I'm, I'm really worried about two, two B is, I guess this wouldn't be two B necessarily. But the, um, the extra tax for th- those, um, extra policemen is up this year. And I don't think it's going to pass because it's never been fulfilled. So that's, that's my, that's my issue.
Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Um, thank you so much for your time. And for those of the civil service commissioners that came today as well.
Thanks for your time.
Um, the last thing on the agenda is, um, as you, as council will remember. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we decided to, um, give updates on behalf of the prospective city. Boards and commissions that were all appointed to by the mayor's office, not only in an effort to update each other. But since it's televised, to also update the public as well about what those boards and commissions are doing. Um, and it's only a monthly update. And so I have a couple of boards that I'd like for us to, um, give brief updates about tonight. Um, the first one on my list is the Urban Renewal Authority. Councilman Flores?
Well, I think, you know, I was on the, uh, Urban Renewal Authority the last two years. So it really wasn't a new board and commission for me. But, uh, since, uh, the new council has been seated, I've had at least two meetings and two finance meetings. There's a lot of activity going on right now. We're looking at, um, number one, uh, looking at the potential of doing something with the, the old city county health department parking lot. Uh, there's a lot of interest by developers to look at that lot for maybe, uh, uh, residential condominiums, retail, even a hotel on that spot. So right now, we're just in the talking stages, but, uh, we're probably going to be, uh, reacting to that and doing something in, in that vein. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, expanding, uh, the south end of town. As far as some additional area there for development along Pueblo Boulevard. And, uh, we're in the very preliminary stage right now. Uh, as far as, uh, the, uh, you know, one of the topics that came up, and I brought it up, and that was, uh, Averas Steel. You know, that we just incentivized to build a new plant. And as to whether there's anything going on, uh, in this Ukraine Russian war. And whether or not that Averas is a Russian company. And, uh, I'm just keeping an eye on that. I don't have any kind of background as to whether or not that corporation would be affected by some of the sanctions that the federal government have, um, have been looking at. Um, I, I'm also on Petco, but you, you're just wanting to stick with a few of these.
Um, questions or comments from the group? Uh, let's transition into Petco then.
Yeah, uh, the other board that I was assigned to was Petco, uh, along with President Graham. And we did have a retreat and, uh, I had never, I had never sat on that board before. I, I've worked with them, obviously, through some of the deals that we've been putting together. But, uh, it was good to meet all of the other board members. It was good to kind of understand the do's and don'ts of what they actually occur. There's a lot of confusion with Petco and the community that they kind of hold the purse string, the purse strings. And that's really up to us as city council, you know, they bring the deals to us, we control the funds. And they simply, uh, bring in the leads and, uh, and, and do that. So, uh, obviously, a lot of the leads that they have right now are, uh, you know, they're, they're confidential. Uh, but they're looking at, uh, building a spec building, which we really desperately need. Another building that could, uh, we could fill potentially by someone that needs something right away. Uh, I think there was something, uh, there's been several things on our agenda about the sale of, or the purchasing of land out at the airport. Uh, so they continue to, uh, you know, to keep busy and, and, uh, I look forward to working with them. I mean, this, we've only had the one, the one meeting. And, uh, I'll be sure to bring forward any, any other things that, that are happening. But those two, we just started. So if you want to add anything. Oh, yeah. Forty.
Yeah, 40th anniversary video is pretty cool. So if anybody wants to know what Petco's done or.
We might want to show that at a, at a work session somewhere down the line where we have some of that space. I think it's only about 10 minutes long. Yeah. All that?
Um, I have the HARP board. So that's me. We've had, um, one meeting thus far. The Riverwalk was just cleaned and scooped out all the disgusting grimy stuff. And they just filled it, I think they filled it last Monday night, actually. So that's full again and looking, looking great. So thank you to the Riverwalk for doing that, the HARP Authority. And, uh, the big thing that they're really looking forward to is the, the boathouse extension. And, um, if you guys haven't checked that out, it's, it's really cool. We, you know, towards the end, there's going to be some county, uh, 1A money, hopefully going into that. And they're, they're doing some fundraising on their own with the Hart Foundation. So that's really cool. And I encourage everyone to check that out.
Um, next on my list is the airport board.
Um, yes, I'm on the, um, airport advisory committee. I attended my first meeting. They're working with, uh, grant money right now with the federal government, um, with the feds. Um, trying to get some improvements done around the airport. The director, um, out there, he is, uh, very well versed. He's worked at the airport for many years and he's really into the needs of the airport. He'd like to get some hangers, but he is not sure that the federal money is going to cover that. Um, they're doing some upgrades to, um, some of the pads out there, um, here with, um, city funds. And, um, it's just working hard to get improvements out there, kind of. He'd like to have a facelift at some point. Um, he says that he gets a lot of traffic and especially through the weekends. In summertime, people actually just fly in to drive around Pueblo and eat at the restaurants. And, and, um, they just stop in for like, it's a, like our Sunday drive in the car or on a motorcycle, they do it with airplanes. So pretty interesting.
The water district, any updates there?
No, not really. Just daily business. By the way, it's Fountain Creek, Rottershead, flood control and Greenway District.
It's a short name. Yeah. Um, other boards that I'm missing at all? Um, I am on the, um, the community, um, commission on housing and homelessness. And there is a brand new, um, rescue mission director. So, uh, Kathy Klein has resigned her position and they just actually onboarded a brand new, um, commission director. So, um, she is actually going to come speak to council, I believe sometime late March. Um, just to, for us to meet her and talk to her a little bit. Um, they, the commission is, um, right now working on, um, connecting the DOTS program, actually through the fire department. So DOTS is short for directing others to services as well as code enforcement. To, to kind of connect those two systems and streamline that. Um, and then I do know that the facilitator Alexis Ellis, um, has reached out to members on council to see what they're, um, she's, I think she's, I believe she's emailed everyone on what their housing, um, uh, let's see, understanding the concerns of everyone facing how, like housing in Pueblo. And if there's any, um, questions for the commission to specifically address. So I will be meeting with her on Friday. I encourage all of you to reach out to her, to schedule, um, time on your own. So that way we can talk a little bit more about like affordable housing and, you know, homelessness and things like that, um, in Pueblo. I am also on the planning and zoning commission. So recently the commission passed a text amendment. Which will allow more, more flexibility for developers and revitalizers around, um, outside façades and awnings. Particularly in the downtown area. So essentially it gives more options for developers, um, to choose like different colors of the outside façades and not, that, not necessarily, um, pigeonhole them into a couple of different options. Now I believe they can choose from, um, like two out of the five or, or something like that. So it should provide a little bit more flexibility for developers who not only want to build in the downtown area, but who want to revitalize as well. So I think it's, I think that that should be really exciting, um, and hopefully streamline more development and revitalize, revitalization downtown. Um, like Councilman Flores, I'm also on the Urban Renewal Authority. And I also know that they recently, um, purchased new furniture inside the convention center. To, um, do more like placemaking inside and it's very modern. And, um, I think the finance committee that, uh, Councilman Flores is on, um, it looks really nice. So make sure that you check it out sometime if you're ever stop by the convention center. Any other, uh, any other boards or commissions that I, um, have forgotten? That you feel pertinent to, yeah, Councilman.
Yeah, we're all on Payco, so there's no specific person. But Payco, uh, is right in the middle of, of, of finalizing the 10-year transportation, uh, plan. And that includes lots of projects around Pueblo, you know, finishing off the highway 50 bypass that goes into Belmont. Uh, that will be probably, uh, could, you know, start and maybe completed in a couple of years. But they're already purchasing the rights of way. So you remember where, uh, the hangar was and the radio station, those will be raised. And, you know, the, the road, uh, freeway will, will expand to the west there. And then on the other side, you've got a lot of businesses there too. And they're in the process of acquiring all that property. So that's the next big highway project in Pueblo is, uh, redoing that, uh, circular deal. A lot of trucks have tipped over in that corner. Because it just wasn't designed for these huge, uh, trailers. The bridge also has to be raised. I mean, we've had several trucks hit that bridge, that Belmont Bridge. And, uh, so that's kind of the next. And there's several others, you know, they're going to help us redo Mineral Palace Park sometime in the future. Uh, the big elephant in the room is where we're going to get the money for city center to 13th. That was the next big thing, but that's, that's like a $250 million project. So it's all about money. But, uh, you know, so that's what's happening with Payco.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. I think that we'll continue, um, those council board and commission updates on the fourth Monday of every month. Not just for each other, um, but for the public as well, just to add transparency there too. So it is, um, six, oh, yeah, Council, sorry.
Um, Laura, I would like, um, some time at a work session to talk about the vacant property registry. And possibly changing that to a abandoned property registry, if we could get that on the work session. Um, and also do, did you get any word about our website and having all the work sessions posted like they were years past?
Uh, Councilor Winner, uh, we, they are, um, finalizing now. I think they posted today, but we were wanting to post standard processes. So with our first and third, um, Mondays only on Zoom, the posting comes differently. And, um, it'll be posted the next day. And with the second and fourth, like tonight, it comes through the live feed, um, through PCC's, uh, recording. So it's posted on a separate, um, uh, platform. But they should all be available for all citizens to view in the same exact place. As soon as we get the, the nod that that's what's happened over in the city clerk had those conversations today.
Okay, good. Thanks.
If I see no other business, we're good to adjourn at 6:38.